All right, great. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Belleflower City Council. It is Monday, August 24th, 2020. It is 7:04 by my watch and this meeting is called to order. Let me report that there is no reportable action to report from anything that took place during the closed session today. Let's see, before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Item number six, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Santinas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. Alright, so item number seven and eight. Today, we will be led on our invocation by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. And in our pledge of allegiance will be led by our Councilmember Sunny R. Santinas. Please stand.
Okay, let us pray. Let's say, "Dear any Father, again, we thank you for this time given to us to conduct the business of the city. And Father, we thank you dearly for the many blessings brought to our community. Father, again, our now, now, our community is being challenged now with the health pandemic. We ask for the hedge of protection for our residents, for families, for businesses, for schools, for our first responders, and service personnel, for our leadership in government, for our nation. Father, we ask for clarity and understanding as we hear the agenda items tonight. We ask for your wisdom and guidance on our actions. As leaders, we are blessed with the drive to serve. Father, we pray for unity, for we say, 'Belleflower together will be a stronger Belleflower.' We ask this all in your son's name."
Amen.
Amen. Let's place our nation's flag, place your hand over your heart, and together we say, 'I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.'"
Thank you for that, gentlemen. Item number nine, City Council Announcements. Let me start off with mine. The city of Belleflower recently rolled out the Belleflower Recovery Program, which allowed for restaurants and retailers to take their business outside by applying for a temporary permit. The program has now expanded to include barber shops, salons, nail salons, fitness, and personal care services. All establishments must adhere to guidance provided by the LA County Department of Public Health, as well as applying here with the city for a permit to lawfully operate. For businesses with wide sidewalk drainage seeking outdoor space, the Belleflower Business Recovery Program provides modifications to allow for outdoor dining and sales on sidewalks, parking lots, and other rights of ways. Retail sales are permitted in parking lots and side lots. All applications must be approved prior to business modifications and can be found here on our website at www.bellflower.org. Mayor Protem Dencoupes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Belleflower invites you to participate in the Belleflower Honors Program. This program offers an opportunity to honor past and present military personnel from Belleflower by dedicating a street pole banner. Banners will go up in November, stay up for one year, and they'll be taken down and given to the honoree or family as a thank you for their service. For more information, please contact Mike Machado, (562) 804-1424, extension 2258, or you can email Mike at mmmachado@belleflower.org. Before we... PG, are you online? Are you listening?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. This is a great program, and my question to you is, would an honoree, would that be a photo of that person depicted, or how does that go?
Yeah, yes, the format would be they would provide a photo for us and we impose that onto the banner. There's a flyer on the city website that actually shows what they look like. So, all the banners that we get will all be uniform, but the individual's picture and their some general information on the branch of the service that we're honoring will be on that banner.
And it makes no difference if you could put your grandfather up who operated in World War II. It's okay, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I do want to say as well, if they do not have a photo that would show up good, we can still do something and we can adjust it where it would just be their name on it as well.
Okay. It's a great program, and I just wanted to get some clarification as to how it would go. Thank you for answering the questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Protem Koops, that's a great clarification. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again for stopping by in the Belleflower. Okay, the Services, I'm sorry, the Service Corps of Retired Executives, also known as SCOR, S-C-O-R-E, is hosting a free small business workshop. This month, they are focusing on DIY videos. This one-hour webinar will give tips and tricks for lighting, sound, makeup, background, scripting, and much more. The webinar is scheduled for Thursday, August 27th at 10:00 a.m. To sign up, visit the city's website at www.bellflower.org, or the SCOR website at www.worshops@scor114.org. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. Our Economic Development Department has created a resource to help promote local restaurants. The webpage shows which Belleflower restaurants are open and have outdoor seating options and provides information about specials. This is a great way to promote our local restaurants and share resources with our community. For more information, go to our website, www.bellflower.org/resources/business/bellflower_restaurants. Yeah, I think maybe if you got to our website, you could find it on one of the tabs. That'd be easier. Or you can call our general phone at (804) 1424 and ask for the Economic Development Department. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Santinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. The Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District recently launched its grassroots outreach program called Mosquito Watch. This neighborhood program facilitated by the district's community liaisons educates, mobilizes, and empowers Angelenos to take action against mosquitoes as populations and virus activity increase. A new resource website, www.tiptostakeaction.org, allows individuals to join Mosquito Watts by taking a pledge to protect their communities. So, it's very easy to sign up. Please check the website. Residents are encouraged to continue eliminating standing water and report neglected swimming pools. For more information or to file a complaint, call Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District at (562) 944-9656, or visit www.glacvcd.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santinas. Item number 10, Public Comments. Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the three methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you for that, Mr. Stewart. Before we begin, I would like to, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab, if by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments at that time. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor. We have Naomi Gardner from Kingdom Causes Belleflower that wishes to present public comment. Ms. Gardner, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen, and then you can begin. Go ahead, Ms. Gardner.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I work for Kingdom Causes Belleflower again, and tonight I would like to share on behalf of our organization, two success stories related to collaborations with the New Hope Shelter in Belleflower and their staff from Mercy House. First, I would like to say how grateful we are for our partnership with the shelter. It has been so incredibly valuable as we work to connect our homeless neighbors to safe, clean shelter, to have the amazing support that they receive from everyone who works there. A few weeks ago, an elderly homeless resident had to exit a motel at Project Room Key suddenly and had previously lost his vehicle where he used to sleep. In past times, the client would have ended up on the streets until a placement in the city of Belle or in downtown LA opened, which could have taken weeks. We were able to refer that client within the same week to the shelter and prevent any more time spent on the street. And the second story I would like to share began with a call I received from a social worker with adult protective services. He was asking if we had any options for one of his clients, who was a resident of Belleflower. She had received a 60-day notice from the trailer park where she was living and was facing homelessness within the next two days. She is elderly, on a fixed income, and was unable to identify an alternative housing option in the allotted timeframe that she had, unfortunately. One of the pastors at her church also contacted KCB later that day to discuss her options. We offered to refer her to New Hope Shelter as a temporary option until appropriate permanent housing can be secured. After I spoke with her, she agreed that staying at the shelter would be the best option, given her circumstances, and a referral was made to the shelter the next day. We were able to coordinate with APS, this neighbor's pastor, and New Hope Shelter to ensure as smooth a transition for her as possible. She was able to enter the shelter the same day that she had to be out of her home, which thankfully prevented her from having to spend any time sleeping in her car. Since New Hope Shelter opened, it has been such a pleasure working with Mercy House. We are so incredibly thankful that they are in Belleflower and that they have been so willing to collaborate to provide the best possible care for our neighbors. Thank you so much. That's all I would like to share.
Thank you for sharing that story, Ms. Gardner. Very powerful. And I think it's an indication of what we as a community can do when we work together. And I'm just incredibly proud of our team and my colleagues for what we've done with New Hope and just these stories that we keep hearing more and more. And I know that we are going to be putting up a nice video that was just shared with us today regarding New Hope as well, that I'm hoping that our residents will find as a source of pride, really, and also hopeful as well. So, again, thank you for sharing their stories, and we hope to hear from you again. Thank you. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comment as well?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other public comment at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Great. Item number 11, Public Hearings, we have none. Item 12A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action. Read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1399, an ordinance amending Belleflower Municipal Code, Section 13.24.220, governing the recovery of service charges for collecting solid waste and recyclable materials. Mr. Gurecki, as you see, will make a presentation.
Thank you for that. Welcome, Mr. Gurecki.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight, the proposed ordinance would amend the municipal code by requiring persons opening new accounts for solid waste services to either file a security deposit or execute a lien authorization agreement with the city. It's on. For solid waste services. If you recall, back in July, we had a property owner that was here that was stuck in the pickle when we were doing our delinquency tax rolls for the delinquent accounts. As a result, what we found out is that's kind of a common practice, where you have a tenant who rents a location, whether it's a business or a property, they take out the trash count in their name, and then they no longer are a tenant, and then they skip town on the trash, which essentially leaves the property owner responsible. And if they're not paying attention to their properties and their tenants, all of a sudden, at the end of each year, they're hit with a tax roll bill. So, what this would do, would this would essentially change and allow for any new customers to come in and either put down a security deposit with CRNR or enter into a, excuse me, a lien authorization agreement with the property owner that essentially allows the, if the account became overdue or unpaid, the CRNR could collect the back fees through the agreement, through the security deposit, or they could enact the lien contract. And essentially, what the lien contract is allowing us to do is it's an agreement between the franchisee and the property owner saying, "If your tenant skips, then you are ultimately responsible for it." So, again, either way, what it's providing us is a better method to allow the franchisee, which currently, right now, is CRNR, to collect on the unpaid balances on these accounts. So, with that, the recommendation would be read by title only and waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1399, or alternatively, discuss and take other actions related to the assignment.
Thank you, Mr. Gurecki. Sorry about that mix-up with the mic. That was on me.
No, it's okay. No problem.
Um, let's see. Questions for my colleagues? Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Koops.
Mr. Gurecki, has CRNR ever been beat out of any of their bills because of the current situation on how we handle it? I was under the impression they went on their sales, on their tax bill, and they still got their money. Are they, yeah, CRNR, do they have a bad debt column for Belleflower trash collection?
Yeah. I would not know that answer. That would probably be better coming from Dean or another representative from CRNR. Now, I know they do struggle with these accounts each year. Every year, as you can see, when we do our first notices, there's like 800 delinquencies. And then after you get to, after our first notice, there become 600 delinquencies, and then it whittles its way down to a couple hundred every year. So, either way, I think they're always in a battle, every year. And every year, there are tax rolls that are going, that are being assessed to property owners, whether or not the property owner is aware that their tenant skipped out of town or whether they just, in fact, refuse to ever pay the bill. So, CRNR, I think, probably has a pretty good battle on their hands each year with certain account holders or trying to collect on accounts. Because even though we put it through the county, Bernie, about how long does it take for the county to process where CRNR starts seeing the money?
Yeah, it's about six months that they're still going to be in the rear waiting for that money to come through the county.
So, the mechanics of it would be if you're a new business owner, or I guess anybody that's going to open up an account, residential or commercial, you would then pay a deposit commensurate to... I didn't remember what it said. Was it a year? How much deposit do you need to...
It would be equivalent, I think the way we wrote it is it would be equivalent to the one month, the average of one month of the previous bills for that property. And again, this would only be for a tenant taking out, opening an account where they're not the property owner. The property owner themselves, when they're taking out the account and they own the property, that's a different scenario that we're not discussing this evening, or not where this tool would help out in that case. This is more for when a tenant is opening an account where they don't own the property. They're opening the account, and then when they're becoming delinquent on the account, and they just leave, and then the property owner, by default, because, again, the unpaid account goes on the tax roll of the property owner, so the property owner, by default, becomes responsible for that bill. So, that's what we're trying to clean up with this amendment here.
Well, we know what permeated this was when we had the gentleman here, and he had the property on Buffalo Boulevard. The, I believe that trash was over like 2,500 bucks, wasn't it?
Correct, yes.
So, if you were to have the guy pledge one month, that'd be maybe 200 bucks as a deposit?
As a deposit, yes.
That's not very much security for the potential of running up a bill to 2,500, is it? I mean, $200 just one month, that doesn't seem like very much to make a difference.
Yeah, again, it's, how long it took for it to get to 2,500 bucks?
Well, and a resident, they might pick up every day. You know, my bill at the store, once a week, is 150 a month, but I'm sure it's more if you have a pickup every day like a restaurant would have.
Correct.
But I'm wondering whether or not that amount of money would be significant enough to make a difference on how recovery the money would be.
I mean, I think there's, as a starting point,
Yeah.
um, for the purpose of getting this in place, if we looked at a, one, the average one-month cost of the bill and utilizing that as a security deposit, it gives us a good foothold. When we get through the process, another year, if CRNR is still having problems and they're having issues collecting on that, perhaps we can look at, seeing if they want to increase that amount of the security deposit. But I think to get it, to get it off the ground and in place and make it a tool available to CRNR in order to secure some of the debt that they're losing, the unpaid bills that they're losing out on, one month should suffice at this point.
And they're not losing out, they just have to be patient, two to six months to get their money. The money will come.
Yeah, the money eventually comes, correct.
You remember what I said that night? I always make sure I pay the trash bill and I add it to the rent so I don't face this problem. And, well, I mean, it's your property, my property, it's my responsibility. I pay the water bill, because if they don't pay the water, I've got to take responsibility for that as well. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Koops. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Gurecki, again, I think it's a, I think it's a straightforward request, report. I think it helps cover this issue of fairness and responsibility when, you know, delinquencies pop up. So, it's a start, and obviously, you know, it could be worked on, if, you know, in discussion with the operator. It could be modified possibly. So, at this point, I'm good with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Yeah, this is, no doubt, will fix the problem. And I think mainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gurecki, but it's mainly the commercial properties, not residential or multi-tenant properties.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it a, is it 50/50 or more commercial? Yeah, it's probably 50/50 between residential and commercial.
The staff report doesn't say anything about a deposit or anything like that, so that is to be determined on the fly, it sounds like.
Correct.
From CRNR. They'll decide who, you know, based on whatever their formula is, they'll cover their butt, I'm sure.
Yeah, and the way we, the way the amendment's written in the actual municipal code, I believe we're calling for the average monthly bill for that property.
Yeah, I would, yeah. If that's the way the ordinance ordered, just one month, average?
That's the way it's written right now.
Yeah. I think, you know, we ought to just say, maybe ought to get a deposit, because I know deposits for utilities are way more than one month's trash bill. That's going to be just 100 bucks. I mean, we can fix it here right now, maybe go three months or something like that. Deposit, and it saves us from coming back.
Or you can leave an incumbent upon the franchisee, which in this case is CRNR, to set that security deposit amount. Again, ultimately, it's them trying to collect on their accounts.
But as long as it don't have to come back. I'm worried about staff time. There's no sense in bringing this thing back to, if they need to come back every year.
Carl, can we, can we leave it open-ended for the franchisee to designate the amount, or do we need to set an amount?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can certainly change the language. This would be in the first sentence of proposed amendment to Section 13.24.220A1. Currently, it reads, "The city manager designate, designee may set the amount of the historic average monthly bill for the property served." We can simply take out, we can simply amend that draft language to say, "May set the amount of the average bill for the property." That way, it's not specific as to monthly, but it leaves it up to the franchisee to come up with the actual deposit based upon the creditworthiness of the applicant.
I think that's the way, should be the way to go. Makes life easier for everybody.
And that's absolutely fine.
And it's appealable to the city council, Dave.
Yeah, as long as my colleagues will buy in on it. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton, for that. Councilmember Santinas.
Yeah, let me just piggyback on Councilmember Dutton's idea. I like the idea, but can we limit it to, let's say, about three months, because I don't want CRNR asking for a one-year deposit. That becomes too onerous to the tenant.
Sure, I mean...
So, I would say between one to three months, depending on CRNR. So, they have to make a decision. Will that, will that work?
Yeah. I meant in three months, anyway, so.
Right. So, it's kind of flexible. It's up to them to make a determination.
Not to exceed three months average.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's great. So, Councilmember, you okay? Councilmember Santinas, yeah, okay.
Okay. The other thing is, so the, so the actual form is going to be managed by CRNR, right? The lien form, the deposit, they will, they will take care of that?
Yes, they will.
Okay. So, the onus on them to verify that the person applying for the trash collection is not a tenant or a tenant. Because somebody says, "Mr. President," that they own the property, it's on them. It's on CRNR.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
This is their service.
That's their service. So, they have the, they have the responsibility to verify that the person applying is, is or not a tenant.
Correct.
Okay, very good. I'm, I think it's a good idea. I think it's going to help CRNR in terms of collecting their, you know, past due bills. It's one way, because eventually, it's going to help us also as a city, right? Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have no questions. Everything that I had in my mind has already been asked and covered by the report. So, thank you for that, Mr. Gurecki. Madam Deputy City Clerk, may we have comments from the public regarding item 12A?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comments.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, gentlemen, last minute questions for staff?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just make sure that the council's all on board with amended language of that first sentence. It would read, "The city manager designate may set the amount of the deposit based upon the average bill for the property served or for substantially similar property not to exceed a total of three months."
I think that captures it all. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, hearing no final questions or comments, is there anybody who'd like to make a motion regarding item 12A?
I'll go ahead and waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 1399, an ordinance amending the Belleflower Municipal Code, 13.24.229, governing the recovery service charges for the collection of solid waste and recyclable materials as amended.
Great.
I'll second the motion.
So, I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton, and a second by Councilmember Santinas. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Mayor Garza.
Aye. Thank you for that, gentlemen. Item 12B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to adopt Resolution 20-59, a resolution declaring the city's intent to become subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1400, an ordinance adding Chapter 3.30 to Title III of the Belleflower Municipal Code to extend the city's election under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act to all forms of public projects as defined in the Public Contract Code, Section 20002002C.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Mr. Gurecki?
Again, good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Just make it a little shorter than the subject title. Just make it a little shorter than the subject title, so right now we follow the Public Contract Code. The Public Contract Code historically sets a limit at five thousand dollars, uh, for basically any type of, uh, work that we're doing out of, uh, my neck of the woods over in Public Works. The five thousand dollar threshold has been set for a couple decades now. It's never accounted for in terms of inflation, or it doesn't adjust or move one way or the other for us. So that's historically what we have to deal with, anything over that threshold, we have to do a formal RFP process for. Um, the advertising alone that we're required to do for public projects will exceed a five thousand dollar project. So we're, we're typically spending anywhere from forty-five hundred almost six thousand dollars every time just to advertise a project, uh, when we put these out to bid. So the smaller ones, uh, don't generate a, a, a huge demand from contractors. We find it quite hard to, to find work or people that are willing to come in and meet the bonding requirements for the city over a twenty, thirty thousand dollar project. So what we're looking at doing and what we're requesting this evening is, uh, to, uh, declare the city's intent to become subject to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And as Jeff had mentioned, it would, uh, increase the thresholds for the city manager's spending authority and the ability to use informal bidding on public projects as defined by the Public Contract Code. So the UPCCAA, so we have to shorten it up there a little bit, allows us to, uh, adopt a resolution electing to become subject to the, to this code, um, and we have to notify the state controller. And in doing so, uh, we have to adopt an ordinance enacting the informal bidding requirement set forth in the UPCCAA. So currently there's a, a little over a hundred and twenty cities that are following this. So with this process, uh, again, we can bypass bidding for projects that are less than sixty thousand dollars. Projects may be performed by city employees, by negotiated contract, or by the purchase order. Uh, it allows the city council to award contracts through informal bidding for projects between sixty and two-hundred thousand dollars, uh, so that's the informal bidding amounts that we can go with. And then anything over two-hundred thousand dollars requires a formal RFP process. So the, the, the process here, um, with the state controller is you're, you're utilizing a, a series of approved vendors, you're, you're having them, um, listed out for you, which is something a little different than, than what we do right now. When you have these projects, you can reach out to the vendors, um, you have to advertise the projects in certain, um, magazines and certain newspapers, and you have to process it a certain way, um, all per the state controller's office. So you follow those guidelines, we have access to the, uh, to a lot more vendors that are familiar with this process, and then we're able to follow through and award the projects under these new thresholds, which again are significantly more than the five thousand dollar limit that we're set with.
And when that list is provided by the state controller's office?
Correct, yeah, the, the process of how we have to list it out, and then there's qualifications that each vendor needs to meet. And o- o- once you have a list, uh, say the city of Downey has a vendor list from this area, it's, it's very easy to piggyback on top of their list, take a look, add more if there's a, if we know of a couple that, that aren't necessarily on their list that could meet these requirements, so that would be, um, the process for us. So with that, the recommendation to the city council be adopt resolution number twenty-dash-fifty-nine, uh, read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance fourteen-hundred, or alternatively discuss and take action related to this item. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Grecky, I did notice that there's a significant amount of other public agencies that also have adopted these procedures, like cities, and I've seen school districts as well, right, so.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, a more efficient way to get your projects done, uh, in the city, I mean, you're, you're, excuse me? Smaller projects, yeah, I mean, all projects, yes.
Thank you for that, uh, let's start off with, uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've worked in the public sector, so I, I, I recognize that this, uh, this measure could be, uh, uh, most helpful here. Yeah, five thousand was way too low, and things have changed, and, um, okay, Mr. Grecky, um, I noticed that, uh, the, it became state law back in two thousand nineteen, so was it just, uh, we just felt it was appropriate to just keep with it and, you know, just keep a watch and see what else others are doing, and then get on board with it?
Yeah, it was our, our city attorney actually recommended it, that we should look into it as being a little more efficient in terms of our, our processes for our projects, and, and we'd taken a, a look at it, looked at what the requirements would be, uh, kind of what we're faced with as a staff in terms of the reporting, and what we, what we have to do in addition to the way we normally have to report out projects. And then in looking at that, I mean, we determined, I think this is a, this is a great model, it actually will, will be very beneficial to us, both from a, a cost savings perspective, as well as, um, a time savings.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
By all means, yes.
Utilizing, uh, an approved vendor list is a, a lot more efficient than sending something out and trying to cold-call people for, you know, weeks on end to come and participate in a, in a project that they, they, it just isn't, you know, very high-dollar for them, or profit margin for them.
Okay, another question, uh, you know, how often is the vendor list updated? Okay, is it just ongoing, is, or you have to, during certain periods, you gotta, you gotta, you know, put together a list and then report it out?
I, I, I do not recall seeing, uh, in, any kind of a, a deadline in terms of the vendor list. Now, we, we get called, the clerk's office gets quite a few calls as well from vendors, uh, that are asking to be put on the list, um, and that, that's a common call for us, so I think it's ongoing, uh, we would constantly be adding to it. I mean, just because you call, uh, doesn't mean you're eligible for the list.
Oh, sure.
You have to, you have to meet all the qualifications of the state in order to be on there. Uh, but if we were able to vet somebody out and successfully put them on a list, then, yeah, we certainly would do that, yes.
Does the state permit, uh, uh, to, to permitting, like, in-town vendors? Their allowance of a certain percentage, or it's, it's open?
No.
Anybody has a fair shot at?
Yeah, it's open. I don't know that there's any, um, uh, competitive bonus points that are given to in, in-town vendors or anything like that, but I think a lot can be said just in the money saved on travel time. You know, so if someone's coming from Simi Valley to work on a project down here, I think their price would naturally be, significantly higher than if it was a local in-town business. I think you'll save that out that way.
Yeah, all right, sounds good, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Dutton.
I have no questions, I totally agree with the staff report.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton, Councilmember Santenaz.
Thank you, Mr. Grecky, for bringing this item, um, it just makes sense, and one thing that I thought when you were describing the, uh, the obstacles in a five thousand dollar limit is not only for us, also for the contractor. Because can you imagine them, uh, submitting a bid for five thousand dollars? It takes staff time, it takes them money, too, so that's why in, in a lot of cases, they don't even submit bids anymore.
And, and that's an issue we've ran into the last few years with some of the smaller projects.
Right, um, couple of questions here, um, so once we submit this resolution, do we have to renew it every, every so often, or are we locked in for that period of time?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the couns- the city is then subject to state law under that accounting act until such time as the resolution is terminated. So it's an, it's an ongoing process.
So we have to opt out if we don't want it anymore?
Correct.
I see, okay, thank you. Um, does the, how about the amounts that were, uh, the threshold amount of sixty thousand, two-hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, in the state law, is there a provision for inflation?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one of the reasons that this, uh, came up to the surface in two thousand nineteen is every two years or three years, I forget whether it's two or three years off the top of my head, but the state actually increases all the contract limits in all of the bidding provisions.
So there's amounts could change?
Correct, that's an automatic change.
Great, wonderful, okay. Um, and then on the six, on, on the threshold amount, does this include the overhead rate of the contractor? Or just basically just the base bids? You know, I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of curious.
Their base bid typically is gonna account for all their overhead rates.
Including the overhead?
Yeah, I mean, th- this would be the, 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 the final bid amount on a proposal would be the sixty thousand dollar amount.
Okay, okay, good, good. And, um, in the second threshold here allows the city council to award contracts to an informal bidding process. Can you, can you describe to us that, the mechanism to, to go about the informal bidding process?
An informal bidding process would be, uh, for instance, it would be us going to a vendor list to say we want to replace, uh, one or two AC units here at the, at City Hall facility, and we know that it's probably gonna be less than two-hundred thousand dollars, but it's gonna be more than sixty thousand dollars. So we would go to those vendors and acquire with three or four of them and ask them to provide pricing for the install. That would be an informal way.
Just basically by email or phone calls, things like that?
Correct.
Okay, very good, so it's really efficient way of doing it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, I'm, I'm, I'm for this, it makes, it makes sense, and let's do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santenaz, uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can't see a downside to what you're offering to do here, I think, uh, it, uh, makes us more efficient and we save a little money, so looks like a good deal for me.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem, okay, so, uh, at this point in time, if we have any members of the public that wish to comment on this, uh, please let yourself be known, and, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you don't mind letting us know if there's anybody wishing to make comment?
Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, okay, great, uh, gentlemen, last minute questions, comments regarding item twelve B? Uh, CNN, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-dash-fifty-nine, read by title only, wait for the reading, introduce ordinance number fourteen-hundred.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mayor Protem Koops and a second by Councilmember Hamada, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk, item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
This consideration possible action to direct city manager to monitor parking demand and availability for a year to eighteen months and authorize the city manager to conduct a parking space and Luffy study for future downtown development, and I believe Mr. Delong has staff report for this item.
Thank you for that, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, if I could ask the city clerk to, uh, give me, uh, permission to share my screen. There we go, okay.
Nice graphics.
Thank you. All right, so tonight in this presentation, we're gonna walk through, uh, the following sections of, uh, the March twenty-twenty downtown parking analysis. We'll go over the goals, definitions, data, conclusion, some rockability and parking management slides, and then the recommendations. So the goal of the parking analysis was to determine if downtown Bellflower is nearing its capacity, uh, for public parking. And there's a few new, uh, de- uh, development projects in the pipeline, so we wanted to see exactly where we stood with these projects coming on. So, uh, now with some definitions, since today kind of marked, this week marks the return to school, we'll have a little bit of a flashback and go into some definitions so that we're all talking the same language when we get into the, uh, parking analysis. So the downtown north study area is, uh, predominantly what I identified as downtown Bellflower from Flower Street north to the West Santa Ana Branch, uh, right-of-way. That's shown on this map here in the blue, so those are all the areas that we looked at, uh, parking, including the, you can see kind of the jut out where Library Garden Park is, that public parking, and the parking along Flower Street that is curbside. In this study, capacity is the total number of available longer-term public parking spaces in the downtown north study area. And if we look at this map here, those are going to be the green circles, which are the longer-term curbside parking spaces, and the black squares with the white numbers in them, which are the, uh, various parking lots throughout the downtown. This, uh, capacity was determined using a recent parking analysis conducted by K-two traffic engineers for the Brew Refinery Project, which is also located there, it's down towards the bottom center of the screen, where that will be located. In addition, staff wa- walked out, did some fieldwork, and counted and confirmed the on-street, uh, parking spaces, curbside parking spaces, and the short-term parking spaces, which are those in the white circles and the purple circles. If we look at available longer-term parking spaces, those are defined as the on-and-off-street parking spaces with a minimum of two-hour parking. And, uh, again, those were, those were all the, uh, green circles and the black squares. And then we define the peak need and demand time, and this can vary on project by project, uh, but this happens to be defined as, skipping my pages here, the peak need and demand times for incoming projects that we're showing here, which I'll identify shortly, are Thursday through Saturday evenings, these all tend to be weekend, late week, night, peak, uh, driving projects. Uh, the K-two parking analysis done for the Blue Brew Refinery Project conducted parking counts three consecutive weeks in April of twenty nineteen, and then we asked them, as part of that analysis, to add a week in June of two thousand nineteen to account for, uh, the opening of Steel Craft, and that was right at the peak of, uh, the excitement of Steel Craft at that time. And it actually was the night that they did that, one of the nights in June was actually a street fest night. So the, uh, peak demand at that point in time was around a thousand spaces, just over a thousand spaces. So the new incoming projects that we wanted to talk about that are part of this analysis are the Stand-Up Comedy Theater, which is on Belmont Street, the Brew Refinery, which was the subject of the parking study that we've been talking about, and that's going to have a micro brewery on the first floor, restaurant on the second floor, and a lounge on the third floor. That project is currently in plan check. And then there's Edgeway Downtown Bellflower, which is the mixed-use TOD project, uh, being done by Serrano Development Group, and that's over on the former Greek Market site, that'll contain a four-screen lemonade theater and around five thousand square feet of commercial space and ninety-one residential units. These are a couple of quick shots of those projects, just to get you a visual. Now let's look at the data. As mentioned earlier, staff was able to use the parking analysis conducted by the engineering firm K-two for the Brew Refinery Project, K-two did a parking space inventory of the public parking lots, and they did a parking survey to determine the peak use times for the available downtown parking lots. To do this, parking counts were done during, uh, during four one-week periods, three in April and one in late June, as I mentioned earlier. Some more baseline data, staff counted and categorized all of the curbside spaces, and we subtracted the loading spaces and time-restricted spaces, which varied from ten-to-twenty-minute loading zone spaces. Pretty much excluded those from longer-term parking since, because of the restrictions. And then, uh, then basically, uh, you add up the, all the parking spaces in the parking lots, all the longer-term parking spaces, uh, along the curb, and we got a total of one thousand two hundred and forty-four parking spaces. Uh, that in, also includes the Regional Transit Center parking structure, which was not included in the K-two study because it wasn't, uh, finalized yet. So the peak demand was deter- of, uh, one thousand and nine spaces was determined by the study that So the peak demand was deter, of, uh, one thousand and nine spaces was determined by the study that K-two did. And then we added in longer-term curbside spaces and includes the addition of a hundred and forty-seven parking spaces for the three projected development projects coming to town. Uh, we added one space per estimated employee. And we also, uh, did one space for every two seats for the theater uses. And that's how we got the one hundred and forty-seven added to the, uh, projected use. You take the total amount of parking spaces in the downtown and you subtract the peak projected demand of those parking spaces on the weekend nights, which, in which these uses are projected to have their peak usage. That's a hu, one thousand and nine parking spaces. That leaves two hundred and thirty-five parking spaces available in the downtown north study area during the peak demand times of Thursday evenings through Saturday evenings. And then there's, uh, walkability, and that's one of the key components, uh, along with parking of a successful downtown. So a quick slide on that, a couple of slides on that. Uh, the locations of various parking lots in the downtown, along with the tr, attractions of the downtown, make downtown Bellflower really a, an extremely walkable area. This table shows a few of those distances and walking times from parking lots to various attractions. At an industry standard walking speed of three-point-five feet per second, a quarter mile can be traveled by foot in just over six minutes. And that is the distance from either parking structure, the Regional Transit Center, uh, parking structure or the county parking structure behind City Hall to the Stand Up Club on Belmont Street. Walking to Steelcraft from the Regional Transit Center parking structure is about one-eighth of a mile and right around a three-minute walk. And here's a visual to kinda give you an idea of, uh, where things are located. You could see if you walk to the Brew Refinery from the parking lot across the street, even if you were in the back of that parking lot, it's about a tenth of a mile walk. So should staff's projections fall short and parking is much more impacted than anticipated, there are a number of parking management strategies and policies that can be used to alleviate some of the parking woes. These vary from short-term fixes, those paid parking options and stricter time limit regulations and/or enforcement of those regulations, to longer-term options, including creating an in-lu parking space fee for future development and adding parking inventory through acquisition and construction of parking lots or by working on shared parking agreements with owners of private lots. You may remember that the city implemented a public valet parking trial in the public lot behind Steelcraft. This was relatively successful, but its full potential may not have been realized since, uh, some of these uses were not at, at full tilt, such as, uh, the comedy club wasn't open yet and, and, uh, Steelcraft was really getting underway. Other paid parking methods can be strategically implemented, implemented to get more utilization of peripheral lots by, for example, having paid parking at the core near where all the action is and locating the free parking farther out. Additionally, I wanted to provide a brief explanation of parking in fee, parking in lieu fee programs. These are programs implemented by cities that have downtowns that more often than not have limited parking. In these areas, developers who cannot meet the required parking for their project onsite would pay a fee per parking space in lieu of providing those spaces on the site. With that said, staff recommends the city council direct the city manager to revisit the downtown parking situation in a year to eighteen months, which will hopefully be post-COVID nineteen. And the comedy club will also have been operating and working up to capacity after the pandemic. Not to mention the main event center also operating at that point in time. Additionally, uh, direct staff to conduct a parking space in lieu fee study for future downtown development or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, a really comprehensive report, Mr. Delong. Let's start off with questions from my colleagues, Councilmember Dutton.
Hey Jim, that was a very good presentation that you had from the PowerPoint, uh, the explanation. I think you, uh, hit on every base and every idea with the parking. Kinda unique that we have that inventory now and, and, uh, you did an excellent job.
Um, thank you.
Seems like more parking than, than I had in my mind when I read the staff report. And, uh, and, uh, well thought out and kinda makes me, from where I'm at here, kinda rethink things. And I, I, I think, you know, we finally caught up to parking. And, uh, with the new venues gonna be opening, uh, late this year to beginning of next year, revisiting it would be a great idea, I think, and, uh, will let us know where we stand in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Uh, Councilmember Santenaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Jim, for that very good presentation. And, um, when we talk about parking, I, I get very excited because, um, we're doing something, I guess, something right. Because now we have people coming to, especially coming to downtown Bellflower. Uh, let me just, um, do some kind of checking here in terms of the numbers. So did the K-two study include the, uh, the main event center?
It did not, uh, Councilmember Santenaz.
Okay. So, so we didn't include the, um, parking structure, but the, um, main events was not included. Okay. So it's almost like a wash then. So, um, let me refresh my memory here. Um, if I recall correctly, during the holiday season, uh, we had, um, I think Steelcraft was booming. Then we had the, um, valet parking. And, um, the parking structure was under construction during the holidays. And if I recall correctly, some of the big events did not happen at the main event center because of lack of parking. I was told by Kaiser that they did not, um, host the event here in Bellflower because of lack of parking. Is that, is that true? Okay, so having said that, I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile the numbers here because, um, in the surrounding development, we have nine, we are, we, they assigned to us, to the city, ninety-seven parking spaces, right? Jim, are you still with us?
Oh yeah, I'm still there, yeah. I'm ju, I'm just listening, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm just trying to kinda reconcile those two big, big projects. So, uh, Serrano Develop is ninety-seven and then I'm hoping that, uh, the main event center will be back to its full use again with three-hundred capacity. So I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineering expert here, but assuming everybody carpools. So you're gonna have a hundred and fifty vehicles parking in the parking structure. Plus the ninety-seven for Serrano, that is two hundred and forty-seven already. So that will basically almost use up the, the parking structure.
That, that, it would use up that many parking spaces in the, in the downtown? And yes, a bulk of them would be used for the main event center.
Okay, and then, because part of the equation with the surrounding development also is, um, they, they took over the parking lot in the back, so we will lose the parking spaces in the back. Correct?
That, that's true, but that was, that was considered in the parking in the study. That, that, if I go back to that particular map.
No, I'm just, I'm kinda, these are, these are just anecdotal numbers that I'm trying to throw here.
Yeah.
Because I'm just trying to reconcile what happened during the holidays versus what I foresee happening in the future. Because it seems like there's not a lot of parking available still. I, I don't doubt this number. I'm just trying to put my layman's experience here with what we're getting into now. So how will that alleviate the situation if we have main events at full capacity? The Limeli Theater, full capacity, all the shopping, full capa, ninety-seven spaces being utilized and then Steelcraft booming again? I'm just kind of seeing that there's gonna be lack of parking.
That's entirely possible and that's one of the reasons why we recommend going back and reviewing this as different projects come online and, and the main event center starts going again. We can kind of evaluate that as we go and see if we need to anticipate parking problems and implement, uh, a parking management strategy here and there, uh, as, uh, as things go and maybe get busier than we anticipate.
Okay, well, uh, I, I guess we'll, that's something that we will have to, to do. Okay, so that's, that's the first part. The second, the se, the, the second part of your recommendation here is, uh, you mentioned about the in-lu, in-lu fee.
Yes.
Uh, program. And, uh, I, I, everyone, I've been, I've been trying to push for this, uh, for so many, for so long. Because, uh, uh, to me, it's, um, it boils down to fairness. Uh, because, um, thinking about the development that doesn't even have space and what they do is because of the lack of space, they need to develop in its full capacity. So they assign the parking, parking requirements to the city. I, I get that. That's something that we need to do. And, um, I, I still wanna go back to, let's say, the Belmont Court way back then. Uh, that's something that the city invested. It's something that's needed. Uh, in fact, not only did they assign the, um, the commercial parking space to the city, we also, um, invested to CDBG for so many units so that the, the, the project will pencil in. I get that. Uh, we need to develop, uh, downtown Bellflower. But what I was think, I'm think, I've been thinking, uh, for the last year or so now is I, I think we're now in a different place. But, uh, we cannot, to me, we cannot continue giving away or having developers assign their parking requirements without compensation to the city. I get that. Because to me, i, it, it's a matter of fairness. So for example, let's, let's say for instance, the comedy club. There's no way the comedy club can provide for parking. There's no more space, okay? But in the meantime, they had, they are developing a business that will require parking. So we allow them to assign their parking requirements to the city. I get that. That's been, that's passed already. We're past that. But in the future, I'd like to see developers pay for in-lu fee for parking requirements that are being assigned to the city. I'm not looking for, mind you, I'm not looking for a, a full compensation. I'm not. I'm not looking, uh, don't tell me that, oh, we're gonna take the cost of the parking structure divided by number of spaces. That's the cost that's gonna be assigned to this developer. No, because that's an expensive, um, project. And, uh, I, I don't want to, I don't, I don't need to go back to how much investment we did that, the concrete piece and so on and so forth. That's an expensive project. What I'm looking for is develop an in-lu fee so that, um, the developer can pay for something just not to the acquisition of land. I'm looking for to develop the parking space and to maintain the parking space. And so that we can continue acquiring parking lots. I say that because, um, the assignment of parking spaces, I'm assuming will be continued like a, as, as, as a licensee, city attorney. Is that right? They're licensed. They're not, they don't own the parking space. We own the parking space. We license the space to them. So that will continue. So the land is owned by the city. So I don't want the, the, the cost of the land being passed on to the developer because it's gonna be cost prohibitive. But at least the cost of developing the parking lot, they should pay. Because otherwise, if, if a developer has the land to develop, they develop the property, they develop the parking space, they're all good. Here comes another developer, they don't have the space, all they do is assign the parking space to the city. So it's not, to me, it's not, it's not even. Okay, so we're allowing them to develop in the city even without the parking requir, to, to meet the parking requirements. We're allowing to assign them, but they need to pay something because there's a cost. Otherwise, it's all gonna be coming from general funds. You and I will be paying for those parking space. Indefinitely. Because there's cost to maintain those parking spaces. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that insightful, um, analysis, Councilmember Santenaz. Uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, uh, Sunny, you've given a lot of thought to what we're looking at and what the future holds. You know, and, uh, I too am concerned as to whether or not we can accommodate all the different projects and the parking that goes with them, especially when we get Steelcraft going to full tilt, the movie theaters, the ninety-three units behind it, the, uh, Fire Museum and Event Center. There, and they tell us that, and one, correct me if I'm wrong, there could be five to ten thousand people a day getting on and off the light rail on our boulevard. And many of those people are going to be leaving their cars in a structure or two, um, as well. And that's gonna happen three to five years from now. That, that is, so we're gonna have the, uh, the movie theater project, the four theaters. I was surprised to read how many people are gonna be able to fit into the comedy club. Hundred and fifty-two? I mean, that's a lot of folks. But I, I am enthused about the, what we have. To have a thousand parking spaces is impressive. I'm impressed by the fact that we have projects that are going to come back online after we saw how successful they are. We know they're gonna come back and they're gonna be good. The folks that utilize the kinds of activities we have provided, I would like to think that we may have to provide a way for them to ride their bikes into town. You know, we need to have some parking set aside for bicycles usage where they're safe and, and and maybe even have a monitor there to make sure that everybody gets their bike back. But I can see that that is a potential. Not everybody that lives in town needs to drive their car downtown. They could easily come and ride back, bike back home again. But I think this is a good start. I like the idea that the city manager will take a look at it and will assess what's going on, uh, within the next twelve to eighteen months. And, uh, we always prayed for a parking problem. You know, that was always our deal. And, uh, God has answered our prayer that we have a parking problem and we've got activity now. And, uh, I also think about, as we go a little farther up the boulevard, we still own the bank building. And obviously, that's gonna get developed in some way that's gonna create a parking issue. Uh, we still have the, uh, JCPenney Building that's gonna come online with another set of issues with parking and, because we've already discussed that. So it's just not what we're looking at from Flower Street to the railroad track. It's beyond and all the way to Artigia Boulevard that we have to be cognizant of the parking issue. I mean, we do the, uh, measure A, I mean, the, uh, the area A primarily because that's where we put our emphasis. But, uh, we're gonna have to expand our parking beyond what we have. But I, I agree with this report. I, Jim did a fantastic job of laying out what it is we have, what we've got. And, but I agree with Sunny that, uh, we need not be too generous with the giveaway of the parking spaces. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, parking, oh, well, first off, I wanna thank Jim again, uh, for having the study, uh, completed. And, uh, and yes, it's a, it'll be a working animal. I know for years on the planning commission, we've always had that dis, that question of is, okay, how many, how many public spots are left now? And, and, uh, we could continue to always try to watch it and, uh, try to figure out, uh, how far can someone walk, will be willing to walk and, 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 you know, utilize, uh, you know, uh, the business opportunities here. Um, yeah, parking studies, uh, tend to be very finicky and, uh, uh, the, uh, number of, uh, you just, you know, you can always add something to the formula and then it, it may throw it off or it may, uh, make it better. I, I know that one thing over the years that I've always kinda questioned are the, um, are the two, uh, public, I'm sorry, uh, the two private lots that, uh, that are identified. And those are the red zones on the map there. The one that, uh, the property owned by the, uh, um, by the company that shares the, uh, building with the chamber and how they've secured most of their parking. Some of their parking appears to, uh, in that, uh, in that access, uh, uh, drive, uh, from the post-op. Some of their parking appears to, in that, in that access uh, uh, drive from the post office. Uh, I know that the, the post office property in the back is secure because that's where they store all their work vehicles. So I don't see much opportunity there unless, you know, we lose the post office. But um, uh, I've never seen parking enforced at the post office because I see people walking, parking and walking all over the place. So and that's throughout, throughout the day and weekend. Um, uh, people tend to, um, yeah, of course, the one for that, that, that private lot that's secure and you can't get into it. But the, the row of parking spots on the back, they are signed. So some people tend, yeah, will tend to follow it. But uh, I know over the years, there's maybe been opportunities to ask, you know, especially the one business owner is, uh, you know, why would, uh, would you not be able to share those parking, yeah, yeah, liability and, you know, maintenance and so on. But uh, and I think, Jim, you've told me, we've tried. And it never turns out to be fruitful with them. For some reason, they wanna secure it and, and protect it. But uh, I'll tell you, most of those spots are never utilized. So that's one I always see as an opportunity down the road. And um, and again, the post office is available, not, you know, not enforced. Um, so, and, and I know because it's labeled private, you don't, you know, you don't want to count it in just in case. So uh, but from a practical standpoint, it, uh, you know, those spots are used. Um, uh, again, I, I, I agree with some of the other comments. Again, uh, looking at the big picture along the entire boulevard, uh, trying to figure out the parking uh, uh, areas, uh, you know, we're working on, we're looking down there and uh, trying to figure out some more. Um, up here, it, it, even though the numbers are greater here, it, it has the potential to be, to be tight as uh, uh, mentioned by Councilman Santenaz. Uh, uh, it's the old saying, you know, trying to uh, put uh, ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack could be, could be hard, but it's uh, if you mash them, maybe, you know, but uh, but uh, but to, to, to try to get people to feel at ease on walking a few blocks, I, I think, uh, that's where the struggle can, uh, tends to be. But uh, and this is where the other added comments about pedestrian, bicycles and obviously make it attractive for them and, you know, provide facilities. So it, it, it's a big picture uh, needed to um, to keep this thing going. Uh, now, when Metro comes and um, they're gonna build their parking lot too, is that lot gonna be restricted to only train users? That's what I would have been kind of told. Usually, that's how they do it. So, but on the other hand, we're gonna permit train users to find maybe a spot in our parking truck because they'll have, they'll get shade for the whole day. And then wa, you know, pretend to maybe, uh, or stop by and get a coffee first and then walk to the the train or, or go to Omega and get something and walk to the train. Uh, uh, yeah, there, there's gonna be potentially a, a need for enforcement. Uh, uh, but um, again, I, I think it's a great start. Uh, the parking loot, uh, been exposed to that for years too, and, and I, I agree. Uh, it's, it's not gonna be a, a, a perfect uh, return, to speak. It's not gonna be the, the full amount, as mentioned. I, that's never gonna happen. Um, so uh, that magic formula, that's gonna be, uh, to get staff to work on it. And obviously, there's a lot of examples out there and they'll utilize it and we'll use the expertise of uh, probably, uh, you know, parking consultants. So I, I think it's all, I think the recipe is getting together and uh, uh, we'll uh, come with a uh, uh, something good out of this. So uh, again, I, I would agree to keep at it and uh, uh, monitor this and um, give the city manager uh, the authorization to move on the study. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, Mr. Delong, I thank you for, for the presentation. I, uh, I'm in full support. I, just a couple of questions. Um, actually, just more actually points for as the study gets performed, just some added items to see if we can maybe uh, enhance the, the end result after the amount of time that this study takes, the proposed parking space in lieu fee study. Uh, one of them is just to confirm that the study that's being proposed for that, again, that in lieu fee study is eighteen months, correct?
Um, no, I'm sorry. The, we would be looking at the reviewing the parking situation in twelve to eighteen months as, uh, as these projects come online and COVID goes away. The study could potentially take a lot less than that. It's, uh, so that, the eighteen months, they're, they're two separate items.
That's, and I suspected, I just wanted to just, just in case. Um, so some of the things that I'm hoping that we'll look into when, as we go down this path of assessing the um, the in lieu, uh, as, as we know, it's something that's new to us. Uh, I know it's being done elsewhere, but it's new to us. And as, as was pointed out here today, uh, Councilmember Santenaz, Mayor Protem Koops brought up some really good points for us to consider. So um, obviously, how much other locations are charging, other cities, municipalities are charging for the in lieu would be, would be of interest. And I know that's something that you committed to here in the recommendation. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm satisfied with that. Um, the other thing that I'm, that I'm hoping we'll be able to get an idea on is, is as developers um, or any potential parking users ask for it, uh, for them to pay in lieu would be if, um, like, what's the methodology on that? Is it based off of uh, like, they're allowed a cap as to how many parking spaces they are allowed to pay in lieu of? Is it a lot for their whole parking needs? Like, I'm, I'm interested in that. If there's a cap or if it's open-ended. Um, and what that cap is, the methodology is, is it just? Anyways. So that, and I'm interested in that. Um, the other thing I'm interested in seeing is um, if the fees that are collected, the in lieu fees, are they like one-time charges or if it's like an ongoing fee that's charged to that developer or that business? Um, and um, the other thing would be if, what they're using, those funds that they're charging, uh, what are they using for? Is it, are they being placed like in, like a protected account um, to address other issues like parking cha-challenges potentially in the future? Like, it's like a fund that's growing for it to be reinvested in par, addressing parking needs in the city? Or if it's being funneled into the general fund? Like, I'm, I'm interested to see how it is that they're using those fees. Um, the other thing is, again, if those fees are protected, um, I could potentially see the viability of these in lieu fees that are being collected, being potentially used to maybe be a down payment uh, for another parking structure in the future. Right? And I think there was a, uh, if you, if you don't mind going back to the um, the slide where you had a, the number sequences for the different parking spaces in throughout the town, uh, throughout downtown. So like this one in, let me see, I'm gonna try to use this. Okay, so.
Is this the right one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. So, you know, I, I mean, considering the amount of use that's coming in, you know, with the theater here and this use and then just steel craft and then the theater. And, you know, you were seeing a lot of density of uses here for parking. I mean, I know there's been exploration and, and, and some, in very informal talks of us potentially going up in this area for a parking structure. Right? Um, or even back here as this thing gets a little more dense as well. Um, who knows? Maybe it's another part of the, of town. Uh, so I'm interested to see if the, the in-lu's are generally used where they're collected or if it's a general pot for throughout the city. And they're used wherever the city deems a need for. Because considering the um, the Bellflower Exchange that's coming down south of the boulevard, I could potentially see that parking lot behind that necessitating potentially in, increased parking as well. So maybe a structure there. Um, and um, that's really it regarding the comments, uh, regarding things that I'm hoping that we'll see in the in-lu whenever that's, that's brought back to the council. And then the last thing, I know there was a comment that was made uh, by Councilmember Hamada regarding um, uh, and some other council members regarding the, the use of, of the metro line and and to my knowledge, Metro's gonna be constructing their parking lot uh, in their side of the road, which is on the opposite side of the rail line uh, from the parking, our parking structure. But I think, uh, also just a reminder to all of us that the reason that we, Mr. Greck, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the reason that we installed infrastructure in our parking structure uh, that allows for us to install gates in the future if need be, including the infrastructure for metering and people in, in pay kiosks was for this exact reason that if for some reason that metro parking lot starts, uh, their use starts encroaching upon our parking lots, that, that would be something that we can uh, install and have ready to use to control that parking uh, uh, ratio, correct?
Yeah, correct. The ultimately, when we, when we built it, we prepared for the future, gave ourselves plenty of extra conduits under the full concrete structure. So we have the ability, if at some point down the line, we want to introduce pay stations, uh, a pay booth at the beginning, or we get to the point where we want to start doing any type of uh, secure gating in there. Uh, the infrastructure is there. It's in the concrete and we'll be able to transition to that relatively easy. Without having to take out too much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Greck, for just that information and to my colleagues really for the foresight when we built the structure of, of having that infrastructure in place for exactly situations like this. So uh, they really, those are my requests in terms of the in-lu as we look into that, for, for that to be considered. Uh, that completes my comments. So with that, uh, gentlemen, any last questions or comments before we go to public comments? Yes, sir.
You know, I'm like the historian. Every year I get a little older and have to tell a story from way back when. Um, if this thing works, you know. All right. In the old days, when I was, back in the fifties and sixties, when uh, Bellflower Boulevard was really hustling. Chamber Commerce had a, a van, an open deal called a tram. And that would start at the Greek market or the uh, the theaters. It ran all the way down Bellflower Boulevard, looked down by the uh, J C Penneys and came up. It was a fixed route. And every fifteen minutes, you knew that thing was coming by to take you wherever you wanted to go. Now, with the technology we have today, we could actually have a tram and you post places along the boulevard where it is gonna stop. And you could actually see where it is in the system because we all have GPS on our cars. They can certainly put that on the van. And so if someone says, you know, I'm gonna want to go down to see uh, something going on at once. Or, uh, we're gonna go down to J C Penney, we're gonna go here. You could see where that thing is and you get on it, you park your car, you're not moving it around. And you could see the whole town without having to disrupt the parking situation. So there's some possibilities here for things to be used, uh, old technology in a new way. Uh, bicycles, uh, trams. Um, we need to keep that, our minds open on that too. I'd love to be able to have usage. And we do have it, but it's a lot of the way, the parking lot behind the uh, out in front here and behind the library. You know, there's a great parking structure there that if people utilize that, we had a means to get them to the boulevard in a semi-current way. Uh, that would be a relief as well. But we've got to think outside the box a little bit on this stuff. I mean, all the other cities are always amazed at what we pull off over here. Let's continue with our innovative thoughts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Any other questions, comments before we move to public comment? So seeing none, uh, this is the moment for the public to be able to give their comments regarding item thirteen A. Madam Deputy City Clerk, may we have any members of the public wishing to make comment this evening on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment.
Thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, gentlemen, any last minute, last minute questions or comments before? Oh, hey, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to monitor parking demand and availability uh, to review downtown parking situation for a year to eighteen months and authorize the city manager to conduct a parking space in lieu fee study for future downtown development. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Santenaz and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Mayor Garza.
Aye. Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Uh, item thirteen B, Mr. Stewart.
Consideration of possible action to one, adopt resolution number dash twenty sixty, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual action plan for program community development block grant. Annual action for coronavirus funds and approving uh, a spending plan for the California Department of Finance CARES Act pass-through coronavirus relief funds, C R F. And two, discuss and fiscal, and finalize the C D B G dash C V emergency resident assistance program guidelines and the C R F business assistance program guidelines. And Jim's department said it again, but this time I believe you have Travis Sides making the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a follow-up item from the August tenth, twenty twenty regular city council meeting to approve a spending plan and program plan for the use of community development block grant coronavirus funds, also known as C D B G C V and State Department of Finance coronavirus, coronavirus relief funds, also known as C R F. As a brief overview, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act, made funding available for local governments to prevent, prepare for and respond to coronavirus. Under the CARES Act, the city will receive five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars in C D B G C V funds from HUD and six hundred or nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars in C R F funds from the State Department of Finance. In order to access the HUD funds, the city needs to amend its current annual action plan through a substantial amendment. Up to twenty percent of the C D B G C V funds can be used for program planning and administrative costs. For the C R F funds, the city needs to submit an expenditure report to the D O F by September fourth, twenty twenty, which is next Friday. And the state has indicated that these funds can be used for administrative costs for implementing new programs designed to respond to or mitigate COVID nineteen. At the August tenth regular city council meeting, staff sought direction from the city council on a spending plan and program implementation plan for these funds. And based on the feedback that was provided at that meeting, staff has prepared the following spending plans and programs for the city council's consideration. For C D B G C V funds, staff has budgeted approximately four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an emergency resident assistance program, which would provide rental, mortgage and utility assistance to Bellflower residents that have been negatively impacted financially by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Staff has budgeted twenty percent of the C D B G C V funds for program planning and administrative costs. This amounts to about one hundred and eight thousand dollars, which will be used to administer the emergency re-resident assistance program. For C R F funds, staff has budgeted approximately five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to assist businesses that have been adversely impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic. About three hundred and five thousand dollars is budgeted for estimated qualifying COVID nineteen response costs and reimbursements. And fifteen percent of the total funding is budgeted for planning and administration costs. This next slide summarizes the eligible COVID nineteen response costs and reimbursements that staff has deemed eligible based on the C R F guidelines provided by the State Department of Finance. This includes eligible sick and family leave payments, unemployment benefits, laptops and computer accessories, the temperature checker at City Hall, a Zoom subscription, air ion distribution units and the city's twenty-five percent FEMA match with a total of approximately three hundred and five thousand dollars. Following a review of the HUD guidelines and the recently released HUD notice for C D B G C V funds, staff is recommending an emergency resident assistance program that provides rent, mortgage and or utility assistance payments in the form of a grant. Staff recommends up to one thousand dollars per month for assistance up to six months. The assistance could also be provided for a combination of arrears and monthly assistance payments up to six thousand dollars. Staff is recommending this amount because it seems to provide a meaningful amount of assistance in that it provides assistance in that it provides assistance over a longer period of time, especially as the pandemic impacts continue to linger. So HUD does not cap the assistance amounts. However, HUD has placed a six-month limit on the term for assistance. In order to be eligible for the program, households must be at or below 80% of the area median income, and the household must be able to demonstrate proof of hardship related to loss of income due to COVID-19. The payments under this program would be made directly to the provider, not the residence, and staff is proposing to open the application period for two weeks, after which a lottery could determine which households move on in the process. This next slide provides some examples of different funding levels and assistance terms to give an idea of the number of households that could benefit from the program. At $1,000 per month for up to six months, or in other words, $6,000 in total assistance per household, the approximate number of households receiving the assistance would be 71. This next slide details a possible CRF Business Assistance Program. In order to assist both smaller and larger businesses, a tiered program could be used. Businesses with 25 employees or less could be eligible for up to $10,000 of assistance in a one-time grant. And businesses with 26 or more employees would be eligible for up to $20,000 of assistance in a one-time grant. Additionally, staff prepared a similar rating system to the CDBG Small Business Assistance Program Rating System, which assigns points based on longevity, statement of needs, industry or sector, and closure due to COVID-19. Similar to the Resident Assistance Program, the application period would be open for about two weeks. Eligible uses of CRF grant funds for businesses would be working capital, overhead expenses, rent, and utilities, business services to increase capacity to carry out business activities, labor expenses, purchase of business inventory and supplies, and equipment purchases necessary for business operation excluding vehicles. Following the discussion at the last council meeting regarding nonprofit organizations, staff researched some information on nonprofits for the council's consideration. According to the IRS 501(c) code, there are 36 types of nonprofit organizations, and there are two types of nonprofit organizations that could be appropriate for funding under the Business Assistance Program. The first one being a 501(c)(6), which includes business leagues, chambers of commerce, and real estate boards. And then the second one is a 501(k), which includes childcare organizations. Should the council desire to include nonprofits in the Business Assistance Program, staff recommends including additional eligibility criteria, such as the nonprofit must be located in Bellflower, and it must primarily serve Bellflower residents and/or businesses, and it must demonstrate a decrease in revenue that can be reasonably attributed to the pandemic. So staff recently received some new information from the League of California Cities regarding eligible CRF expenditures. It is possible that public safety payroll costs incurred between March 1st, 2020 and December 30th, 2020 may be eligible expenditures under the Coronavirus Relief Fund Program. So this could potentially include the LA County Sheriff's contract expenses and public safety employee payroll costs. However, staff is waiting for clarification from the State Department of Finance on this. But this is something for discussion tonight as well, if the council would want to use some of these funds for public safety payroll costs if they are deemed eligible by the state DOF. So with that being said, our recommendation tonight is to, one, adopt Resolution Number 20-Dash-60, a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan to program CDBGCV funds and approving a spending plan for the CRF funds. And two, discuss and finalize the CDBGCV Emergency Resident Assistance Program Guidelines and the CRF Business Assistance Program Guidelines. Or three, alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes our presentation, and myself and Jim Delonga are available to answer any questions.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation, Mr. Sias. Let's move on with questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Santanes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sias, for your very thorough presentation. I'm glad you were able to capture the directions given, given by the City Council from the last meeting. I just have a few clarifying questions here. The first, the first question I have is, in your proposal for both CDBG and the CRF, if there's any unused funds, what happens to them?
So if there's any unused funds, then those funds would have to be returned to the State Department of Finance.
Okay. Is there a possibility that, so because we're going to be sending the plans to them, right? So we have to stick with those plans?
Right. We could amend the plan essentially, but what we, what we do have to do is provide them with an expenditure plan report that has to be submitted by next Friday. So with CDBGCV funds, I mean, those funds have a six-year expenditure deadline, so it is quite a while, but 80% of the funds do have to do, be expended within three years. But we anticipate expending the majority of the funds this fiscal year if we get the Residence Assistance Program up and running.
So, but there's a possibility we can shift some funds if there's some kind of unused portion?
Right.
Correct? So I'm just kind of anticipating that, let's say, not every, every penny from the Residence Assistance Program is used, can we shift that, let's say, to business and vice versa?
Right. So we could shift some of that funding around, or the council could if it desires.
And those funding sources, though, because you got to keep the CDBGCV funds within their own little category, and you got to keep the CRF CARES Act funds from the DOF within their, its own category.
So they, so they won't allow any shifting?
They won't. There's no overlap between the two funding sources, but they can shift within the funding sources.
Within the funding source, I see. Okay. All right. Now, I understand that LA County also is giving rental assistance program.
That's correct, yes.
Have you heard about that from August 17th to August 31st?
I'm sorry, what was that?
LA County is also providing rental assistance from, application from August 17th to the 31st. Have you heard about that?
Correct, yes. So they do have a similar program, but it is only for rental assistance, and also it has a lower income threshold. So the max area median income is 50% of the area median income for that program. So for our program, it would be 80% of the area median income, which captures, you know, a little bit more of the low-income population.
Okay, so there's no chance for duplication?
No, so that's something we would also have to screen for as well, and it's something that would be included in the participation agreement, that they would have to certify that they haven't received any other funds.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's good. That's my next question. How do you confirm that there's no duplication of benefits?
Right. So that's how we would do that. We would, you know, that would be a question on the application, and it would be made known in the participation agreement, and they would have to certify that they didn't receive any other funds that would be a duplication of benefit.
And that also applies to business assistance?
Correct.
Yeah, because as you know, I just forwarded information to Mr. Delonge about the the funding coming from the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. They're looking for five businesses in every city, in the eight cities in the, in the area. So that's something that to look out for. And then in your last, the last slide that you showed regarding the use of the funding for CRF for public safety?
Yes.
Okay, so, so when, how much money are we talking about?
So I'm going to go back just to the funding recommendations.
No, it's the very last one, when you said that public safety expenses?
Right. No, that's correct. And this is the, this is the funding source for, for which those funds could be taken from to pay for public safety. So this came up between council meetings, and so we're presenting it now, even though this was our original plan when we brought this to you two weeks ago. This is another option now with the clear, the clarification in the guidelines that is, is available to you to pay for some public safety costs.
So that's already included in the 304,000?
No, it's not.
It's not.
So it would have to come out of the Business Assistance Program.
Okay. So do you have any kind of estimate in terms of what numbers we're talking about?
No, it's actually up to the council. It's the way they're wording the ability to pay for this, it is currently very open-ended. We could potentially use all of it for that amount for public safety costs, and it's up for discussion.
Okay. In your estimation of the $515,000 for business assistance, what is the likelihood that every penny is going to be used up?
I think that's a very high probability that we would use it all. It could take a little bit of time. We have until December 31st to spend all these funds, and we would utilize all that time in order to get those funds out. One, one option could be, you know, if you wanted, if council agreed to use a portion of that 515 for some public safety funds, any other funds, because the qualifying COVID response funds, those are all estimates. So between that and the Business Assistance Program, if there were any unused funds from those two categories, council could authorize staff to use that for public safety funds if any, any of those were not fully spent, and you could give us authorization to do that in the spending plan, and that way, if that does come up later in a number of months as we get down the line here, we can then plug those in for public safety.
Okay. All right. That's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those solid questions, Councilmember Santanes. Mayor Protem Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Travis, you gave your report indicating, the way I read, that the potential to use public safety funds or utilize these funds for public safety, the jury was still out. Although when Jim presents, it sounds like a for-sure thing. Is it a for-sure thing that we can hang our hat on, or is it something that we need to wait and see for clarification?
Well, that's, good, there's another solid question if I, it, we, we have seen some FAQs from both the League of California Cities as well as the Department of Finance that indicate that, and we just want to get a confirmation from a DOF person, not just some email that went out, that that is okay to do. And we're waiting for that as, you know, we're, they, they're busy, or they're slammed with this stuff, and so they're not as responsive as we'd like them to be. And we were hoping to have an answer for you before the meeting, but we didn't get there. So we're pretty, we're pretty positive that these funds can be used for that, but we want to be on the safe side because we don't want to have, you know, paying back funds or getting audited and having an audit finding is not Kay's idea of a fun day. So that, that's why we want to be sure about how we program these funds, and we're close, we're close, but not quite. I can't give you 100% right now.
Now, we're working under some time constraints as you need decisions tonight in order to submit these applications. Is that right?
That is correct, but we can, again, we can amend the program if we get the, the okay to spend them on public safety or a portion of them, whatever you got, whatever is decided. We can amend the plan, and we have all that, we have until December. We're going to request the full amount of time to spend these funds, which is December 31st. So there is the potential to amend this spending plan if the confirmation comes through that we can spend that money on public safety.
Well, based on the body language of the council that I'm reading, there is some enthusiasm for using some of these funds for public safety because we really don't know where our budget's going to land, but we all have promised to protect the community. So we're very interested in knowing whether or not that'll be utilized. When we have had other programs that we were handing out money to business owners, if a person was a recipient of any of those funds in previous offerings, would that preclude them from being a member or applying for these funds?
It would.
All right. So if I got $10,000 to keep my business going at Steelcraft, I'm not going to be able to ask for rent relief or rent money. Is that right?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, that's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think from our last discussion, I think we were narrowing it down. I was the one that pointed out the possibility of nonprofits, and staff has brought up some further ideas. But I do recognize community priorities, and I know that the business sector has suffered hard, and the numbers, what we're getting, I think that's, that's priority, and now with the, you know, questions of future evictions and other, other things, and going homeless and the Residential Assistance Program, I think is a must, and the numbers were about there, what I thought even before the meeting. Came up with a number, and it was very close. So, but going back to the nonprofits and again, I want to, since I, I serve on five nonprofits right now. But what I get is not a heavy outcry for need of funds. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're working hard to use what they have. They definitely have a a great support circle that is very generous individuals, and they have access to, they've had access to foundations, other foundations that have come up with some very good funding. So from a standpoint of, and, you know, I know that childcare came up, and, and, you know, I'd like to know how the school district may, may want to participate in this. So that's the unknown. And, and I think I said something by Jim's way, or Jim said, but from my attention, that there is some other money out there, government money that's, that's been earmarked to, to nonprofits. So they're, they're, they're trying to get, you know, some money out there. So again, this, this is all in flux, and, and, you know, we're trying to work as hard as we can and try to pinpoint the needs as soon as possible so that we can definitely get the money out there. So as it's presented here, I can go along for now, I can go, definitely go along with staff's recommendations. In regards to the public safety, yes, there's an opportunity, but we don't know yet, so I, I don't know if we're going to be able to start tweaking the numbers now. So I think that's a wait and see, and as it's mentioned, it can be amended.
Jim, let me ask a question. Jim, is it, would it be necessary if the council wanted to think about putting in case there is money left over that was unused that could go into public safety, would it be necessary to include that now in the application and then use the money that's left over? And conversely, if you do include the application now, and you do not spend any money in public safety, would that be a problem?
No, that money would just have to be paid back. As Travis mentioned earlier, we could do, do like leftover money that unspent, we, that's a good use for, it fits in it. If it's approved, we can do that.
So what I recommend at council tonight, if there is a desire to go forward for the potential for public safety money, if you include it as a category, don't assign a dollar amount to it. If there's any leftover funds, you can reassign it at the end of the term of the program. Use it for the public safety.
I'd go along with that. I mean, that's, I was about to finish with that, that if, if, you know, we were talking about any surplus, and if we can get that directed to, and if, and in the case of priority, yeah, public safety, I know that's still high on the, high on the list, but right now, it's, you know, on the list, but, uh, uh, right now, it's, um, you know, um, it definitely gets some to the businesses and get some, uh, to, to the, uh, you know, the residents that, that are in need. Um, uh, I know there was comments on, um, uh, it's, it looks like it's, uh, looking kinda hard to figure out who, who will qualify and, uh, um, there's some organizations possibly out there to, to, um, uh, help out, you know? Some of the churches may have recommendations for local families. Um, um, some real estate property managers might have, uh, info out there. So, um, yeah, no, uh, again, information's golden and, um, hopefully, uh, it can all get worked out before, uh, you know, uh, uh, time catches up on us. So, um, I think it's a great start and, um, um, we should, uh, definitely move forward. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. I got two questions. One is also on the nonprofit, uh, topic. Travis, did you recommend in the staff report, did I hear you say you're recommending for the two types of nonprofits?
So we weren't recommending it, but what we were doing was just providing, um, an option and we just did some research on it just for the council's consideration. So it's something that, uh, we initially weren't recommending, but, um, if the council desires to include nonprofits, this is just something we looked into a little bit. I just wanted to provide you with, um, with that information.
Okay. I just want to go to, um, I for one is the belief system that, uh, you know, cause we're, City of Bellflower is technically a nonprofit. Um, nonprofits giving money to nonprofits to operate it, that's not what I think the intent's for. And I think the money is for helping people that are hurting, like paying the rent and trying to keep businesses going. Um, it's to our advantage to keep businesses going and alive because it is revenue to, for our nonprofit to run in the future. Not, I'm not here to pick on nonprofits. Also in the, in the staff report, it also re, talks about the economic development department staff has reached out to a couple of nonprofits for administrating, administering these funds. And I thought it was, the discussion last meeting was pretty clear about doing it in -house. That's a question.
That is true. Uh, we, we just wanna make, finalize it and make sure that's where we all stood.
Okay. Well, we'll see tonight. Um, then the other thing is, uh, my big concern last go around was estimate of how many people could be delinquent in rentals and what would be the flood or, you know? Um, what is the, you know, the monies to help other people? If it's too low and you help a lot and it's not really helping anybody. And I'm glad you put that one on. And I noticed the one in, not in my staff report was highlighted, but in the PowerPoint it's highlighted. Basically, a thousand a month, a thousand a month at six months, it's only helping 71 people. That's nothing when we have an excess of 10,000 rentals in Bellflower. And if we were even to get 10% of those that needed help, that's a thousand. Um, I would definitely see if we did it that way with only helping 71, that's less accounting or less program maintenance to, to monitor. Um, I don't know what my colleagues think, but that would have to be at least cut in half. I mean, at least we can double it to, to 142 if it was three months at a thousand dollars. I don't know what the number is. I think that's for discussion tonight. Is you, are you looking direction to, looking for direction tonight on the, the rental help? Yeah, tonight?
That's correct.
And so we need to, yeah. Since I've been kinda riding this horse from the start on, on the rental thing, I mean, I would, I would at least like to help 142 people at a thousand dollars for three months, you know? Or help more than that. I, I'll, I'll wait and see what my colleagues wanna, um, do tonight when we get into discussion. But that was my comments and my, uh, my questions to staff. I mean, thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Dutton. Really good points. Um, for mine, uh, I, I think too, I'll just piggyback off of, since he left off with this, uh, with considering the graph that's before us right now on the breakdown. I agree with you, Councilmember. I think, uh, the possibility of us being able to help more people, um, is something that appeals to me. I, uh, I personally, I mean, I'm open to what my colleagues would consider. I personally, I'm in favor of helping more. So I think the, uh, doing 800 for three months, 479 really appeals. Again, it's more people. It's not that much of a drawdown from the a thousand. Uh, so a- again, just, I'll put that out there for consideration of my colleagues. Uh, but that, that would be my proposal. Um, in terms of the, the inclusion of the public safety element, I, I, I think to Councilmember Santenaz's point before, I, I don't have an issue with that being included. I, uh, for me, it would be one of those kinda like items of last resort, meaning, you know, I'm, the priority, at least for me, based on the last discussion was for this to go to our businesses and our residents. I'm still of that mindset that it'd be exclusive to those, but at the end, if for some reason we do have some funds left over and we need to spend them before the end of the year, I think we have more than enough places to spend them in, in public safety, uh, based on our budget. So I, I, I would propose again that it, that would be, if we could zero that out, that just as the inclusion, in case if, if we need it, that, I'm for that. But again, my, my focus is on residents and businesses right now. Um, and, um, I, my, what I'm seeing, and I could be wrong, but, you know, considering the, the, uh, reduction in, in jobless benefits that were, uh, that happened recently, and I think we're, we're not gonna start seeing the effects of that really until maybe a month or two from now. And I think as we start seeing that, I think the need will grow. So I just would caution us, um, to kinda look forward and not make decisions off of what we're experiencing today, cause right now, uh, I think things will get worse. That's one thing. And then the, the second thing is, uh, even if we don't have as many businesses potentially that would be using these funds right now, I really think that right now we're, we have the luxury of having the summer months before us and we're able to conduct a lot of our commerce outside. But I think as the winter starts coming, the fall in the winter, I think a lot of those businesses are gonna start trying to figure out how they're gonna do things, cause I can't foresee a lot of us having dinners outside in the cold, unless if you have a whole bunch of, 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 of heating lamps out there. But I, I foresee that, uh, that a lot of that business is gonna try to have to figure out, how do we, how do we conduct this business in those environments? And again, I think that's gonna be something where it may affect jobs if they're, if they're not able to. And so I think that's gonna potentially have a roller coaster effect on our businesses, again, needing more money and our residents, if for some reason they're displaced because of that. And on top of that, the flu season that'll come up and a lot of businesses may end up starting, becoming a little more, uh, sensitive to conducting businesses if they can't distinguish between the flu or COVID. So I think because of that, uh, I, I would propose that we stick to the, um, again, the, the residential and the business component that we proposed before. Uh, those are my comments and gentleman, I don't know if you have any other comments before we go to public comments.
Yeah. Yeah, Juan, I forgot to add that, but yeah, we started, this is our second meeting with these topics. And now the sheriff thing come on, I think we need to hold the course with what we're doing. And if there's any money left over, we can, nowhere to put it, if that, they allow it.
Right there.
And reasonably speaking, I believe our budget for the public safety is 18 or 19 million dollars. We may be talking about a hundred thousand dollars at the most. Let's put it in perspective.
Trump changed.
Right. This is, uh, just wetting the bottom of the pan, you know?
Yes. Absolutely. Gentlemen, any questions, comments before Mr. Hamada?
Uh, Jim, Travis, uh, you'd mentioned, uh, Long Beach and LA can have the residential program. So none of the small, other small cities, uh, have anything or are we becoming another first?
Yeah.
There, there are a few other cities that have implemented these, um, rental assistance programs. So Almani did one. Um, theirs was about $1,200 of assistance. I believe it was only for one month though. And then, um, Southgate, um, was also another city, I believe, that had a rental assistance program. So there all, there are other cities that have implemented these programs with this funding source.
Okay. Thank you. I concur again, try to, um, uh, again, help out maximum number of people, at least, uh, more people get a chance at it. Uh, yeah, hold off if, if there's extra for public safety. Right now, I think, I think the priorities are the businesses and, and, and the residents, uh, who, who are affected. And, um, I said, um, I'm personally okay holding back off on nonprofits. I, again, I think, uh, there's been money channeled their way and, and, uh, I think they have some opportunities there. And I think some other entities may need to jump on board also to, to help, helping that, in that, and, uh, again, those areas. So, um, let's, uh, let's move on.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Santenaz?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification. Jim, on the, um, if we were to submit the budget to, um, uh, DOF regarding CRA funds, are, are they flexible in terms of adding a budget line item in the future or they will allow you to shift dollars between budget line items?
They, they would. We can amend our spending plan, uh, if needed at some point before the spending deadline occurs in December.
By adding a line item later on or?
We could add that line item now as, uh, the city manager suggested if that was, if you're talking about a public safety line item.
That's what I'm getting at. Because I want to have some kind of cushion that, um, remember my first question earlier, uh, if there's any excess funds, where will it go?
Right. I think that's what we would do.
Okay. All right. And, um, and also regarding the assistance, um, before I read your recommendation in the, um, on page, um, page four, um, I, I checked two items here. $1,000 for three months and then, uh, $1,000 for six months. So I, I asked myself, um, because those were, those were my top choices, uh, in the chart. So I, I kept to the conclusion that, uh, there's two questions that I asked myself. Do we want to help more people with less money or do we want to have, to, to help less people with more money? So that's to me the question. Uh, so I, I came to the conclusion that it should be, uh, less money for more people being assisted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Santenaz. Um, and, uh, do you, you gentlemen, so if I'm understanding you correctly, uh, Councilmember Santenaz, so would you be in favor of the 800 a month for three months for 179 people? Okay. For three months. Okay. So just, so we're on the same page. I, I proposed the 800 for three months, 179, so, um, Councilmember Dutton? 800?
I was thinking 500, but it probably wouldn't help much, so.
You're on the chart.
No, I know that. I'm, I'm thinking outside the box here. Are we trying to pay, supplement the rent or are we trying to pay the rent, you know? Um, and again, how many people can we help? But I, oh, the $800 is much better.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
But, you know, if you look at 800, that's, you know, $2,400. It's a lot of money. It's, we're talking money.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Just so, uh, at least we're all know our each other's thoughts on this. So, um, with that, uh, this is the opportunity for the public to comment regarding item 13B. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wish you to make comment on this item?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment.
Okay. That's an agreement. Okay. Great. Just, just in case. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay. Great.
That's Carl's mother.
So she is correct.
Ms. McKay, are you wishing to present public comment?
Yes, I am.
Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Are you wishing to present public comment?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just one moment. Let me get the timer on the screen and then you can. Go ahead, Ms. McKay.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Ashley. I'm from Kingdom Causes and I just wanted to, um, just on, on the last comments you guys were making about, um, either lower, lower, the lower amount for more people or the higher amount for less people, I would like for you guys to take in consideration, um, maybe a higher, higher amount for less people, just because, um, in my experience working in a similar program at Kingdom Causes, the people who are gonna, people, okay, I'm sorry. Let's just go back to you guys' staff report where it says $1,497 is the median for a one bedroom in the City of Bellflower. If you guys propose to do rent for $800 for three months, that is a, a bit over half of someone's one month of rent, right? So that means that after their assistance is over, they'll be right back to square one with the amount of money they're owing, um, and the, and it will kind of be purposeless for the program if people are gonna be owing a ton of rent there afterwards. So I would strongly urge for you guys to kinda take that into consideration with maybe the higher amount. I know that 1,500 doesn't sound very appealing to you guys, but if someone, if, if the median rent is around that, I think that'd be the best practice. Um, but I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, um, just because of the experience I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. King. Madam Deputy City Clerk, we, may we have, uh, any more members of the public wishing to make comments on this item?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other public comment at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay. Uh, gentlemen, I know that what was before is before, uh, was, um, 800 for three months for 179 people. Ms. McKay brought up, uh, a comment. Um, any thoughts on, on that?
Excuse me. Yeah, that, um, was a very, I understand where more money kinda helps that one person stable, but I look at it as that people that, that are, you know, people are still housed, uh, they can't be evicted, they can get their rent delayed. And if we can just give a little help to get the rent paid for the landlord, it gives the landlord some relief and sees down the road, it, the debt that that person has, um, is lower than it was. And I'm from the, you know, my thought, uh, belief system is to help a little more people still. But, I mean, there was good comments and I understand, um, what was trying to be told, but, you know, in a way, in my head, the way it's wired, that's what I come up with.
No, I, I, actually, I personally agree with you, sir, um, on your comments. So, Mayor Protem?
Does this include, I'm asking this question on behalf of Anita. Can rental space in a mobile home park be used for relief?
Uh, Mr. De La Longa?
Yeah, so that's up to the city council. Um, they can be, um, other programs have allowed for that, like Long Beach's program did allow for mobile home, um, owners to be eligible for this funding source.
All right. That's good to know, because we do have about 50 mobile home parks in this town that have people that have need as well.
Great. In terms of the amounts?
I'm still good with the 800.
Okay. Great. Mr. Hamada?
I'm okay with the number. Uh, again, not knowing the exact need right now, I think, I think, I think it's best to go along with trying to max out the number of people that will assist, so. Uh, the 800 combined for three, you know, for three months, uh, it's, it's definitely gonna help when people start requesting it, so, uh, it's, 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 it's the start right now. We just need to get going on it and get, and get it out there, so, uh, I'm, I'm good with that.
Mr. Santenaz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually appreciate your comment and, um, unfortunately, there is no perfect solution to this. Um, any number that we pick, um, is not gonna be enough, uh, because we're trying to help, um, people who cannot afford to pay rent. And, uh, to me, the bottom line is, it's a rental assistance. We're just trying to help them pay for their rent, not the full rent. So I, I, I think that, um, for most, for most people, whatever help they can get, I think will be much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Santenaz. Okay. So, yeah, if I heard correctly, it was, the consensus was for $800 a month for three months to assist 179 people per the proposal that staff made. So, uh, with that, if there's no further questions or comments, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to adopt resolution number 20-60 and, uh, should I say, uh, confirm, um, the points we raised in, in, in any changes for the CDBG hyphen CV, uh, the emergency. and any changes for the CDPG, CV, the Emergency Residential Assistance Program Guidelines and the CRF Business Assistance Program Guidelines.
Great, thank you. And just to clarify, that includes also the inclusion of the public safety element at a zero item?
Yes, again, item item.
And the qualification, mobile home park.
Yeah, yes, so included.
Great. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hamada and a second by Councilmember Santenaz. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you so much for that, gentlemen, that was a really important decision. Item number 14, contain calendar. Are there any items that council members wish to be pulled for separate consideration or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 14H just for a comment.
Okay.
Not for a separate vote.
You got it, sir. Any other items pulled for separate consideration or discussion, gentlemen? All right, so item, any recusals, conflicts? All right, seeing none, why don't we take off item 14H first, Mr. Santenaz?
Yeah, I pulled this item to give the city manager an opportunity to introduce the new staff will be acting building official and also who's going to be acting fire marshal if he's on the line, whoever's on the line. So, Mr. Stewart?
Well, first, I'd like to introduce Jamie Bruco Lara, who is going to be the acting building official until further notice. Ms. Bruco Lara is working on her certifications now to fulfill the requirements of that role. While she's doing that, she's being backstopped by Mr. Don Beeler, who's been on the call all night tonight. Thank you, Mr. Beeler, for being on the call, who is a longtime professional, who's involved with Safe Belt, the company that Mr. Patterson's company sold out to. And our fire marshal, the role that Mr. Patterson also filled, will be carried out by Mr. Carl Thibault, who was also actually Steve's backup as the fire marshal. He's a longtime fire chief out of Riverside County, California. And he will be part of our team and provide the fire marshal services. And Ms. Bruco Lara will be the conductor of all of this to make sure it all works. And we think with this combination of experience and youth that we have the best possible combination, we're making a significant investment in our future and making sure that our building official position is stable and ongoing. And Ms. Bruco Lara wants to take a few minutes to introduce herself. I think we'd all like to learn a little more about you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity of being here tonight and for having you take the opportunity to let me grow my career in your wonderful city. So far, it's been an amazing experience. I have worked here previously under Mr. Patterson, so I do know the city well and as well as the system. And I'm just very grateful to have this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bruco Lara, and welcome to the team.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions.
Absolutely, you've come really highly regarded by Mrs. Stewart. And again, welcome. Gentlemen, any questions, comments for?
Can you, Ms. Bruco Lara, I'm sure that I'll be able to pronounce your name more fluently eventually. Can you tell us more about your experience?
Yes, so I graduated from the University of Southern California from their School of Architecture back in 2010. And since then, I have been a building inspector for the last two and some change years under Mr. Patterson. And I've been working throughout all of Southern California with him as well. I have been a project manager for multiple projects out in the desert area. So I know how to manage people as well as projects, both commercial and residential.
Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamada?
Yes, Mrs. Bruco Lara, I'm not going to hold the SC thing against you, so. I can see Bernie through the crack there, too. But no, but welcome aboard and I know you.
Really, I think you're outnumbered now.
And yeah, I know, and I know you. Can you like the drive better?
Yes.
Okay, welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Being part of us, I think, having been here before, you kind of see how we operate.
Yes.
This is serious business, but we don't take ourselves very serious. And his bark is worse than his bite. She's worked for Patterson. I think it's not just that I regard Ms. Bruco Lara highly, Mr. Patterson does as well. And even though Mr. Patterson is retiring, he is committed to helping her through in any manner that he can. And he's always available for any input that, any questions she might have and any input he might offer. So, and he confirmed that with me last weekend when I saw him, so. Does she smoke cigars? I don't know, do you smoke cigars?
Every once in a while, I do, yes. I have been known to, so.
That's a good resume builder. That's all I have, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back. And did Mr. Patterson teach you about liar's poker at all?
He has mentioned it a few times, yes.
But didn't teach you? Okay.
Did not teach me.
I'll call you for the next game.
He wasn't good at it anyway, so somebody else has to teach her.
All right, Mrs. Stewart, who is going to be wearing that fire marshal hat?
I think it has to be shared for the short term, but I believe generally, Ms. Bruco Lara wore the pink fire marshal hat for the time being, so. We'll get photos taken immediately.
Welcome. As was told to you before, we have fun here, so welcome.
Thank you again very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Santenaz, are you good with your? Awesome, great. Okay, so with that, we don't have any other items pulled, so I'll consider a motion regarding the contained calendar?
Oh, oh. Mr. Beeler, I think? Is that Mr. Beeler?
Oh, yes.
There you go.
Oh, I didn't have any comment, I just turned on my video.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, I want to give you an opportunity to speak before us, since you've been patiently waiting.
Oh, I got a question for him. Do you look good in pink?
No, I think Jamie looked much better in pink.
Welcome, Mr. Beeler as well. So thank you again. And with that, council.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to pull item 14H.
Absolutely. So is there a motion to approve the contained?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Santenaz and a second by Mayor Protem Koops, Madam City Clerk? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much for that. Item number 15. Council reports, let's start off with Councilmember Hamada.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Again, last Monday, you know, that was the last day for the YMCA food distribution in conjunction with the school district, passed out over 250,000 meals over 20 weeks. So just again, a shout out to the wife for taking care of that and coming through to feed the kids of Bellflower. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure and honor to present our, again, former Park and Rec Commissioner, Bob Snow, his birthday certificate. We had a vehicle drive-by and at least a couple dozen vehicles. And we were able to see Bob, who was in one of those little squatty cars, I don't know what they're called, but he was sitting in a nice air-conditioned car, so he could see us and wave. And then we had a little presentation and tried to be as socially distant as possible in the rec room of the facility and just had a great time. And again, Bob sent me a message and I wanted to, again, wish Bob Snow a happy birthday, because today is his birthday, so happy birthday, Bob. And, you know, like I said, he definitely is very thankful to everybody who came and extended well wishes, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Santenaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, Bob, happy birthday. I was there at the birthday parade last Saturday, it was fun. As I mentioned earlier, the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board is offering a small business revitalization fund up to $5,000. So they're looking for business, five businesses in the city of Bellflower who can qualify for this, basically to help them businesses to prevent layoffs. So please contact the Economic Development Department, Mr. Jim De La Longa, for any information or log into their website, As I mentioned at the last meeting, a good friend passed away. So I'd like to request that tonight's meeting be adjourned in memory of Jose Ricardo Pacheco. Jose Ricardo Pacheco was born on December 22nd, 1930 and passed away in August 6th, 2020. He was born and raised in El Paso, Texas by his parents, Solidad Saldana and Francisco Pacheco. He lived there until the age of 16, when he moved to Los Angeles. At age 19, he met and married Margaret Villaverde on February 19, 1950. They were married for 44 years until her passing in 1994. They lived in Bellflower for 60 years and raised five children, Lydia, Villegas, Irma Huerta, Jose Pacheco, Manuel Pacheco, and Richard Pacheco. Together, he and his wife organized a program that provided food baskets and Christmas stocking for the needy in the cities of Bellflower and Paramount. Jose operated a Pacheco's Furniture Store and Interior located in the city of Bellflower. At some point in time, he was also administrator in aid and field deputy for the 54th Assembly District, which was Assemblyman Frank Vicencia and a board member of the Selective Service since 1969. He was a LULAC member for 40 years. And as director of LULAC, he supervised the Junior LULAC Council, believing strongly that youth are the key to the success of the community. He was involved in La Raza and the Sisters City Exchange Program within the city of Paramount and served in the city of Bellflower's Park and Recreation Commission. He and I were appointees of the former Mayor Dorothy King. He's a loyal Dodgers fan. He's a father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and great-great-grandfather. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Pacheco family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santenaz, Mayor Protem Koops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Jose was an interesting guy. And when we would go to contract cities, often he would be there. And I was always amazed, he knew all of the people, the hierarchy of LA County. I mean, the sheriff, the undersheriff, the assembly, everybody knew who he was. And what you just told about his volunteerism explains his connections with all the leadership in the county. But one of the things I wanted to discuss, oh, before we go any farther, happy birthday, Bob. Sorry I wasn't able to make your party on Saturday, I had another commitment, but I want to let you know that I really appreciate the fact that you served so well for me on the Parks and Rec Commission. And as I look around the audience tonight, you and Robin, always sitting up over here on the left-hand part of the council chambers, we miss you. And we miss anybody else that always used to come. But you were as regular as rain, you always came, you always were positive, you always applauded my jokes, you always made sure that we were encouraged by you and Robin. You came forward and explained and helped the public understand what we were doing was for the betterment of the city. Bellflower is better off for having you, Bob, and Robin in our midst. And I'll preach that forever. You made Bellflower better and you continue to make Bellflower better. And so rest well and stay in touch and move off of that. One of the things that was brought up earlier and we kind of moved past it, as we work so hard to try to figure out a way to get this money dispersed to those that need rent relief. And Councilmember Hamada brought up the fact that we need to reach out to property management companies who pretty well run a lot of rentals in this town. And let them know that if they've got somebody that's having a difficult time, that there are possibilities for them. And that doesn't take a lot, there's maybe 15 or 20. Make some phone calls and let them know that there's a potential help there for them. Because I would hate to think that we would go through this money or go through the program and not disperse all the money. That would be tragic. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem Koops, Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor Garza. And again, Mr. Snow, Bob, happy birthday, this is your day. And sorry I didn't make your drive-by birthday party, but I called you before, so I was off the hook. But anyway, from what I understand and what I saw on Facebook, you had a heck of a time. Happy birthday. And Dan, you had a real good point about the property management companies. They would be the clearinghouse for the landlord, the contacts. It would make staff stop easier instead of tracking down a landlord. You know, the property owner, and yeah, it's a great idea. With that, I don't really have anything to report, other than I think it's going to be hot tomorrow. And with that, everybody have a good night.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. And then myself, again, happy birthday to Bob. I happened to be there for the early part of his celebration on Saturday. It was really nice to see his family there, many who traveled from afar to be there. It was really nice to see Mayor Baumgarza's as well. It'd been a while since we'd seen him and just to be able to see those two gentlemen together in one place was really, really nice. And the other good, fantastic thing that he had, Bob Snow, was actually they had mariachi for him there. Which is, and they actually marched down the parade, it was really, really nice, so. Fantastic event for, very well deserved for a very special human being. So again, Bob, happy birthday, sir. On the 20th of August, on Thursday, Bellflower Rotary invited me to have a presentation before them as a guest speaker in their meeting. And so I actually performed the presentation on our homelessness program and our shelter and just the background, how we kind of got to where we're at now. And it was very well received, really solid questions that we got from everyone, our Rotarians. But really importantly, I just thanked them for all they do in our community and other service club that just really goes above and beyond in helping our residents. So again, special thanks to them for the invite and for all they do. We also had a special council meeting on the 19th here. And I know we already spoke about this, but I just wanted to commend Councilmember Hamada and Mayor Protem Koops again for being, coming back to serve another four years on our city council. So just sharing with our residents that, just a reminder that there will be no election this year in November for districts one and two, because these two gentlemen have been automatically reappointed because nobody else pulled papers to run for them. So again, for me, I just echoed the comments that I made before, which is I think it's a reflection of the trust in our leadership. And again, gentlemen, congratulations on that. And just a reminder for our residents that this year, the one city council election that will take place, because there will be one, and it'll be exclusively in District Four. And so District Four is the southwest portion of our city. If you have any questions, if you live in District Four, you can visit the city website and we have a map that shows exactly what District Four is, just in case. And last but not least, I just really want to thank staff for all they do, day in and day out, for our city. Considering the challenges with COVID and considering the fact that we really do operate very lean here in our city, one thing I don't hear is a complaint from our residents that we don't do our job. So again, Mr. Stewart, thank you for your leadership and all you do with your staff. They're very well appreciated. And so with that, if there's no other comments or questions, I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Mr. Jose Ricardo Pacheco to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council, which will take place at 5:30 PM on Monday, September 14, 2020. It is 9:33 by my watch and this meeting is adjourned.